Please, for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this there our daily bread, and to give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation. Let us now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Here.
Counselor Melonazzo?
Here.
Counselor Broderick?
Here.
Counselor Caulfield?
Here.
Counselor Donahue?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Howe?
Here.
Counselor Martin?
Here.
Mayor Armond Mercy? Here. Before we get to the unfinished business portion of the agenda, you'll recall at the last meeting, there've been some inquiries made regarding the changes in the bus routes, and we weren't sure if Mr. Scanlon was able to be here this evening, and we hadn't heard from him. However, he is here, and it's no objections. I wonder if we could just let him address the council regarding the issue that we're all very concerned about. Motion by Counselor Rita Mercia, seconded by Counselor Melonazzo, to spend the rules, to allow Mr. Scanlon to come before the podium and address the council, and also answer any questions you may have. Mr. Scanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. First, I want to say that the new bus hub has been in operation just over five months. Generally speaking, it's running very well. It was a major undertaking between all the planning and the design, and then the construction. But the more difficult part, as you all know, is putting all the bus routes together and having them have that destination be the Kennedy Center. That being said, I think, you know, we have seventeen bus routes going from Lowell throughout the region, and they're going very well. Obviously, every day, we're making changes, trying to see what's working, what can we improve on, and that's really something that I'm looking at very closely every day, to make sure that we can deliver a better product. I think, all in all, we've probably hit on about, I hope, ninety-five percent, although some people may disagree. But I think, generally speaking, I feel as though we've gotten a very good marks on what we've delivered so far. That being said, I realize that the council and the downtown business community has expressed concerns about the level of activity in the downtown without buses not being in the downtown. Just as an aside, I think everyone knows that it's the right thing to be at the Kennedy Center. In this day and age, in the 21st century, it's really impossible to run seventeen bus routes, try to run them on schedule, and it really isn't the appropriate place to run them on side streets or even main thoroughfares in any urban environment. But that being said, it's also important that we interrelate with the downtown, that really our service is really low in the region, and really a major part of that is getting people to and from the downtown. So I have talked to the manager, and I know there's been some inquiries made on how we can do better with our downtown routes. And the downtown routes, Mr. Mayor, what I'm talking about is really the express routes that we run. We run really two buses, really every eight to ten minutes, called an express service, and it runs from the Kennedy Center really down to the corner of John and Merrimack. In addition to that, we also run another trolley bus that's run by compressed natural gas, which is called a circulator route, and it does what it says, a circular throughout the downtown, and it tries to hit as many venues, whether it be housing or cultural venues throughout the city. So I realize that we thought we did the best we could, is putting those two routes together with a trolley bus, but at the same time, I am open to working with the manager and the council on those routes, and try to figure out how we can, should we be hitting more venues with the express, but at the same time, trying to keep it an express. And then, secondly, how we can work better with the circulator route, so that, right now, it's a forty-minute route, I'm trying to get it down to thirty minutes, so that people can really get around without waiting too long in one spot. So with that, Mr. Mayor and council, that's kind of my opening statement. I'd be willing to talk to you, or work with the manager, or the council or subcommittee, on trying to see how we can work better those trolley bus routes in the downtown.
Are there any questions from the members of the council? Counselor Rita Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Scanlon. I'm just concerned about transfer passes. For example, how much does the bus cost to go from point A to point B?
Right now, counselor, the express bus is a free bus going from downtown. The express in town, I believe it is free. If you're out of town, it's a quarter. So that's really, we've tried to keep the same value that we've had throughout the system. We haven't increased it.
But if I live in the downtown, let's say, and I get on a bus, and I want to visit my aunt in Pottegadville by the bus, how much, there's a fee for that, there's a fare for that?
Yes.
Okay.
If you get on the bus, let's say, outside here at downtown, and you want to take the Pottegadville, down Merrimack Street, out to Pottegadville, that would be a dollar for that trip.
But remember years ago, well, you'd go from point A to point B, but then from that point, you got a bus to go, let's say, to Chemsford, but because you're taking the second bus, you wouldn't pay the whole dollar. You'd get a transfer pass, would be like-
A quarter.
-a fraction of the price. Do we still have that today?
Yes, we do. I believe, counselor, it's a quarter.
So you do have that?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Well, I know that a survey went out, because I made a suggestion to the manager. I asked, we have a downtown coordinator. From what I'm hearing, there are a few businesses, quite a few businesses in the downtown, that are expressing to me some concern about the lack of patrons being in the downtown because of the hub and this and that, and I can understand that. So I asked through the mayor to the manager if we could get the downtown coordinator to do a survey, and I know the survey went out, and not that many businesses return them. Be that as it may, I'm still under the belief that we need to do something with keeping patrons downtown.
That's correct.
We really do. So I don't care what the survey said, I'm still thinking, if there's ten businesses that are feeling that way, I'm feeling that way, too, and there shouldn't be anybody thinking like that. That's my comment, that's all.
Sure.
Any other comments? Counselor Howe?
Has the LRTA lost any income as a result of the changes? And if so, how much?
At this point in time, I believe that we haven't lost any income. Actually, our ridership has stayed the same. The only thing that we've lost, counselor, that is the, we offer a free ride when you're at the Kennedy, you're at downtown, to get to the Kennedy and back and forth. And the reason for that is that previously, if someone was taking a trip from Tucksbury or Baraka, or even downtown Lowell to the center, they would have that uninterrupted trip. Right now, a lot of times, they have to come to the Kennedy, and therefore, it really wouldn't be fair to charge them either a quarter or even another fare to get to downtown. So we have kept that the same. So the bottom line is, we, at this point in time, counselor, we haven't lost any money. The ridership has really stayed the same, if it's been pretty, it's actually increased. So I think that's where we are right now.
Okay. Well, maybe the LRTA hasn't lost any money, but I had a conversation with the manager of what I consider the anchor store in the Connie Square area, and he told me emphatically that he lost $3,000 a week in income from the bus situation change to its present arrangement, and that that was a significant amount of money for him and for his company to lose. And I think the lease is up maybe in six or seven months, and I think the, if that store closes because of the bus arrangement we presently have, then I think that'll be the first step in bringing about the ultimate demise of the downtown area. I also talked to another gentleman in the area who has his own business. He said his income is down twenty percent. That's substantial, when you're talking about a single family owning a particular business and trying to survive on that business. There was an article that, a letter to the editor that was in the other day's local newspaper. I think it kind of alluded to the fact that once you hit the Kennedy Center, you might be there an hour or more before you get to where your destination is. Have you had any complaints relative to that issue?
There was no question that in some, there were some situations, because of the change, that someone has to make another connection, and, you know, generally, if someone says that they had to wait an hour, you know, I'll take them on the word that they had to wait. It was probably because the bus that they were going to get at the Kennedy, counselor, wasn't going out for, you know, forty minutes, or fifty minutes, or sixty minutes, the way they said. But it's a question of reorientating people to the different place, destination, and different schedules. To get back to the other point, is why I talked to the manager and others, is that I will be working to address those issues that you mentioned about Middle Merrimack Street and some of those businesses that are affected. When we put in this system, which I mentioned to the manager today, which was an express, to come up Thondike to Dutton, and around Arcane, and around John Street, it was intended to be an express, so that people could get back and forth from the downtown to the Kennedy. And the circulator was done with the best intentions. At the same time, I recognize that that Middle Merrimack Street now generally has, I don't want to say it's a forgotten child, but it is a little bit, it has been left out, and I will be working with you to see if I can maybe change that route a little bit, so that it can work better, at the same time, making sure, counselor, that it's still an express route, and that it works as a transportation system for the whole LRTA. So that's-
So you'll be working on some of those problems?
That's correct.
Counselor Howe?
Since the inception of this policy, how many surveys have we had, and who has performed the surveys? If you know.
I think the city is the only one that is doing a survey.
Right, yes.
Has that been completed?
Yes. It's in your packet this evening. There's a summary. One hundred and sixty downtown businesses were mailed a survey. This comes out of the DPD. There was three weeks to respond. Twenty-three percent of the businesses responded. And based upon this response, says that fifty-three percent of the respondents said that foot traffic outside the business has decreased. Only thirty-six percent of the respondents said that foot traffic inside the business has decreased. Fifty-six percent of the respondents report that their sales have either increased or remained the same. Only thirty-six percent report a decrease in sales. So clearly, I know that Mr. Scanlon's going to work, continue to work with the city to try to answer these situations, but as we all know, six months ago, a year ago, the complaints we received down here were people loitering outside the business. There were too many people on Merrimack Street. Customers couldn't get to businesses, they couldn't walk down the sidewalk. We've tried to alleviate that, we have alleviated it, and clearly, there's growing pains here. And Mr. Scanlon, I'm sure, I know, will continue to work with the city to try to alleviate that. He's got some very good ideas already as to things that might help that part of the Connie Square that may feel a little left out now. But, you know, clearly, not too long ago, people were saying, you're going to do something about all these people on the sidewalk in front of my business. So it's a catch-22.
Well, I just want to say that I'm downtown every single day of the week, with the exception of maybe Sunday, and it's been that way for forty years. The number of times I have been approached and complaints have been made concerning the loitering, I can count in one hand. However, the number of complaints that I have received relative to the present policy that's in effect have been overwhelming. I think the victims in this city are the elderly, the people who, in the peripheral end of the downtown, who get on a bus, come down, walk around, go to a restaurant or a Dunkin' Donuts, and then go back home. They're the real victims, as well as the business people that I just mentioned.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
I was just going to ask Mr. Scanlon about the survey, and it seems inconclusive, but I was hoping that when we did the survey, it was going to come back, that people were exceptionally pleased with the new system. And I understand your point, you're trying to put a new system in place, and I understand the manager's point, that, you know, there are some growing pains, but, you know, when we change a traffic pattern, or we change a street, or a stop sign, or a light, yeah, people do get upset, and we have to tweak it, we can tweak it, but you've mentioned a number of times that you're going to work to improve it. I don't know how that can work. It seems like there's a system in place, that people come from the neighborhoods, they go to the Kennedy Center, and they're going to get on that circulator, and I think the point is, well, may, people are accustomed and have been since probably the beginning of the transportation system, that they're going downtown, that's what their purpose is, they don't want to, you know, particularly nowadays, when convenience is the key to business. It's got to be convenient, people have to be able to access it, get there soon. I've heard complaints, I really don't want to have to get on a bus to go down to the intermodal system, wait for another one. The elderly, you know, they don't want to be waiting outside, it's freezing cold outside. You know, whether it's an hour or five minutes, it just doesn't seem that it's working as a noticeable difference of people downtown, and I've heard complaints from business owners as well. There's been a significant drop in their clientele or their foot traffic, and, you know, whether it's thirty-six percent or fifty-three percent, that's a concern to me.
Let me be specific, counselor, on what we're going to do. First of all, let me tell you that the challenge of putting this whole thing together was pretty enormous, to put a new hub together with all routes, to make sure you get children to the high school, from the Kennedy Center to the high school in the morning, by quarter of eight to eight, in the same time in the afternoon, okay? It's a tremendous challenge. But to be specific about what, I've talked to the manager, and I'd be willing to, in working with this council, is that the key thing is the routes that go to the downtown, those trolley bus routes. Right now, we do a north-south or a south-north route with our express route, and we do a circular route with the other trolley, which I created two years ago to try to help the downtown. I'm going to continue to make that downtown circulator better than it is right today. I will guarantee you that. That runs at six in the morning till eleven at night. No one's ever done that. So, but at the same time, I'm going to make sure that route works better for the city. But secondly, as far as the express routes, I understand, when we created these express routes, they were to get people, and the whole people from Kennedy and downtown, back and forth as quick as possible within the eight to ten minutes. That being said, as I talked to the manager today, it does create, you know, maybe we can do it better by coming down, and I don't want to give details, but we could come down Market, come down Central, go to Prescott Street, and get those circulators, those express in the middle of the half a town in the city better, counselor. So that's what I'm, what we're talking about. I think it's going to make a difference. But without getting into a lot of details, I'd rather work with the council and try to figure out a plan together, as opposed to coming out with something and then find out that it's not really going to work to get the kids to the high school, or it's going to work for the downtown. But I think the manager and I and others can work with you and figure something that's going to work and make the downtown work as well as the LRTA work.
Counselor Martin? Oh, I'm sorry.
I did have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Scanlon, I think, do you, let me ask you, do you track the people that use this express route from the terminal to downtown? I know probably, you know, everybody, there has to be some decrease, because not everybody that was going downtown, that was their destination. They might have switched over and gone somewhere else. So those people aren't on the express route, but have you been able to track what the decrease is and the number of people that actually make it all the way into the downtown?
Um-
I know you said your ridership really hadn't decreased, but I suppose some people are going, they're going out to Chemsford, they come to the terminal, they get on a different bus-
That's right.
...and go out, so they avoid the downtown altogether. But for a good number of people, I would think downtown's the destination. Do we know how significant a decrease that's been?
Quite honestly, counselor, we haven't seen a discernible decrease in people using our system, which ultimately would go to downtown. It's really, people generally have either, the routes north of the city, whether it be Pottegadville, Christian Hill, Centerville, they hit the edge of the city, they either get off, or they come to the Kennedy. The other routes, the south of the city, to the west, like Chemsford, they'll come to the Kennedy. But we haven't seen any discernible decrease in our ridership because of some of our riders having that second trip to make. I hope that answers your question.
What total percentage of the ridership gets on that shuttle to go downtown?
It's a very good, it's probably a little over twenty, probably twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent. So that's a significant loss in foot traffic in the downtown. I guess different people agree whether that's a good or a bad thing, but there are less people going down there.
But those twenty-five percent of twenty, are also getting, they're going from the Kennedy to John Street. That's where they're, either that or to the high school.
Right, okay.
Counselor Bud Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Scanlon, how are you?
Very good.
I attended the dedication for the new Kennedy Intermodal Center, and I think one of the speakers indicated that this new bus route, with the new buses, it was taking hundreds and hundreds of pounds of caustic fumes out of the air. Did you have that figure before you?
I don't have it with me today, but that really is one of the major objectives of this new center and new operation.
And the new buses are run on compressed natural gas, which is cleaner, more efficient-
Correct.
And I heard complaints about the diesel buses downtown causing-
Which idle, which idled, sure.
Right, so you have to look at the positive side of the whole thing as well.
That's correct.
Counselor Melonazzo?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Scanlon, good evening, thank you for being here. I just have a question regarding the Center Cities Committee, and wondering if you would be willing to attend a meeting, maybe on a weekly basis, and this issue has actually come up before their group, and they're actually a group of downtown business people, it's the Downtown Lowell Business Association. I know there's someone from the city that attends those meetings as well. Middlesex Community College is represented, and I'm just wondering if you would be willing to attend a Center Cities Committee and actually make this presentation. So I think they meet on Tuesday morning, and I can-
It would be my pleasure. I've been absent a few times, but I would definitely make it short.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, Bishop Markham, they contacted me, some residents from Bishop Markham Village. If you could look into whether or not the, I think the bus that used to go there has stopped for some reason, so I have been getting some calls from some of the elderly people at Bishop Markham, if you could revisit that issue.
I definitely will.
Great, thank you.
Well, I want to thank you very much for coming. I think the bottom line is, you understand, as we do, that something as major as this needs tweaking every now and then. I'm delighted to hear that you're going to try to address the issue that's affecting the downtown businesses and meeting with various people, and it may just take just that, meeting with them and adjusting the schedule accordingly, so the businesses downtown do not suffer. Thank you very much. If there are no other questions, I want to thank you for being here, and hope you'll continue to work with the manager, and if at some point in time, there needs to be some sort of a subcommittee to meet with you, that can be formed also.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I welcome any counsel to the center, or any questions that they have, or through the manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion by Counselor Melonazzo, seconded by Counselor Broderick, that the minutes of the November twenty-ninth meeting be accepted. Any questions? All in favor, acceptance. Say aye opposed. The minutes are accepted. Under unfinished business, we have an order here to vacate, discontinue, abandon certain public interest, rights, and easements in portion of Jefferson Street in the city of Lowell. This was read and approved. It needs a roll call for approval. Any questions? Roll call.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Howe?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Armond Mercy?
Yes. The next item under unfinished business, we needed to recess this at the last meeting because of no representation from Mass Electric. We have a two-pole location hearing. Place a pole on Conduit Street, and, on Conduit, rather, at 525 Pottega Boulevard. We have someone from Mass Electric.
We do, I'm here.
Name an address, please.
Come again?
Name an address.
Laura Domi, and I'm coming from National Grid at 1101 Turnpike Street, North End Avenue.
Okay.
I believe that the hearing is just for the conduit, is that correct? Is it?
No, it's a place a pole.
Okay.
It's a place a pole and a conduit at 525 Pottega Boulevard.
My understanding was that we were waiting on Verizon for the information from the pole, but if that is not correct, I am prepared to do both.
So you're here to speak in favor of both?
I can. I was unaware that the pole was ready, so I thought we were waiting on Verizon.
Does anyone have any questions? Because we did have the hearing, and we recessed it, so that you could come forward to answer any questions that we may have. Does anyone have any questions? Motion by Counselor Caulfield, seconded by Counselor Rita Mercia, that the matter be referred to the wire inspector. Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question for the representative. It's been brought to my attention that the water tank at Campbell Drive and Wedge Street is still, is not furnished with electrical power yet, and you know, five years ago, Mass Electric was a wonderful company to work with, to do business with, but it almost just seems, over the past year, they're off the reservation. They don't want to-
You have had a rough year, I will give you that.
Well, I'm bringing it to your attention-
Yep.
...that, please-
Can you just give me the information? I'm actually not the Lowell engineer, so-
It's a water tank on Campbell Drive and Wedge Street, and we've been waiting for electrical power to be brought to that facility, and Mass Electric just keeps giving us the deaf air, so I just want to bring that to your attention.
Sure.
Please.
Are you here filling in for someone that was supposed to be here?
Um-
Or are you going to be the representative of-
Well, the person who is supposed to be here is sick, but I don't handle Lowell, so I, but I do know the people who do, so I will-
So will you please refer that back to the man you're representing?
Yes, I will.
All in favor of the motion referred to the wire inspector, say aye. Oppose, it's approved. The next item, under the city manager's portion of the agenda, we have communications for three out-of-state travel approvals, two from the police department, and one from the fire department. Motion by Counselor Rita Mercia, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the three out-of-state travels be approved. Are there any questions? Hearing non-roll call.
Counselor Rita Mercy?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Howe?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Armond Mercy?
Yes. The next item is appropriation transfer to meet fixed charges and current expenses of the city of Lowell for the year 2005, 2006, as follows. That the amount of $50,000 is hereby appropriated to the fire salary and wages permanent, $12,604. In order to provide for such appropriation, the above amount is hereby transferred for said purposes from the manager's contingency of $12,604 to provide matching funds for staffing for adequate fire and emergency grant. I don't understand why it starts off saying that we're appropriating $50,000.
And that's a typo, Mr. Mayor.
That's a typo, okay.
That should be amended.
$12,604. Second reading by title, if there are no objections, the amount transferred of $12,604 to fire from salary wages from the manager's contingency budget. Any questions? Roll call. Oh, Counselor Rita Mercia?
That was my question as well, Mr. Mayor, so what is the appropriate figure?
The amount is $12,604.
Twelve thousand, four dollars. Okay, fine.
Yeah. Roll call.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Yes, as amended.
Counselor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Howe?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Armond Mercy?
The next appropriation transfer in city council, in order to meet fixed charges and current expenses of the city of Lowell for the year two thousand five, two thousand and six, ordered by the city council of Lowell as follows, here's the fifty, that the amount of fifty thousand dollars hereby appropriated to the manager for appraisals of new proposed bridge project for fifty thousand dollars. In order to provide for such appropriation, the above amount is hereby transferred for said purposes from the manager's contingency of fifty thousand dollars to provide funds for appraisals for a new proposed bridge. Second reading by title, if there are no objections, and we do have someone who is registered to speak on this, let me, three people, I'm sorry, this is an amount to the manager for appraisal of new proposed bridge project of fifty thousand dollars from the manager's contingency fund of fifty thousand dollars. Would somebody please come to the podium that has registered to speak? Give us your name, your address, and remember, there's a five-minute rule.
My name is Paul Johnson, I live at seven ninety-three Merrimack Street, Lowell, Mass. I come before you tonight as a resident. I say that because I am the clerk of the Coalition for the Better Acre, however, these things that I'm about to read happen before I attain that post. As a, as a resident, I went to a meeting last year, well, let me read the timeline that we have here, and it will be conducive. On December seventeenth of two thousand and three, the city of Lowell, the National Historic Park, and the University of Massachusetts at Lowell signed a memorandum of understanding regarding the city's new bridge proposal. In late December of two thousand and three, from the Sun newspaper of Lowell, the community found out about the new bridge proposal. From January through October of two thousand and four, our community held, by, when I say our community, I mean residents of the acre, held several meetings in regards to the new bridge proposal, of which very few of the members were aware at the time. September of two thousand and four, we invited the city manager to a community meeting to be held in October of two thousand and four to learn about the bridge proposal. The city manager's secretary told us that he was going to be tied up for the rest of the year. October of two thousand and four, we went ahead with the meeting, we had standing room only, it was held at the Lowell Mission Church, and we had representatives from Mass Highway there, and they asked, answered quite a few program questions, rather. In, also in October, this is when we learned of the memorandum of understanding, in October of two thousand and four, we learned of the memorandum of understanding that took place on December seventeenth, two thousand and three. At our meeting in January, I should say, the Mass Highway representative spoke at great length about the project, and after he left, the residents of the acre decided that they didn't want the bridge to go through this particular proposal, proposed area, and they would like to meet with the city on finding alternatives. After January two thousand and five, the community has met, community leaders have met with city councilors, yourself, Mr. Mayor, the state representatives, and our state senators aide, to talk about the new bridge and find ways to work towards other alternatives. I go through this timeline because when I came to the newspaper this weekend, rather, well, I came to a meeting, rather, on Sunday at a friend's house, and this is when it was brought up, that there was going to be this fifty thousand dollar proposal. We had no knowledge of this. It seems to me, from looking at the timeline here, that the residents of the acre have never been kept in the loop, unless we demanded to be kept in the loop, and we, we're still willing to work with the city, to find a solution that would work to the benefit of both the city and the residents of the acre. So please, you know, don't be afraid to contact the CBA, who is coordinating the effort at the residents' request. When we, when I read about this in yesterday's newspaper, my immediate question was, why? Didn't we just spend an awful lot of money to go through this whole city to figure out what everything was worth? I seem to be, remember sitting over here while people were complaining about it and being read papers and whatnot that they couldn't understand. I believe one of, one of you councilors said a lawyer couldn't figure them out, which I thought was humorous, actually. So anyways, when, you know, I would like a, an answer as to why the money is necessary now, when we've already gone through that. I don't understand that.
Well, you'll understand when we ask the manager to explain to the council why the fifty thousand.
Yes, and we would like you to come to meetings, we will be calling more of you again. We would like to have meetings to discuss the bridge proposal and how we can work with the city on the bridge proposal, but I would like to ask that we disallow this money because I think it's already been done, when we already did the, the big evaluation of the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Jones? Good evening, Tyler. Nice to see you again.
How you doing?
Jim Millenazzo and I say hi to you.
Yeah, how you doing?
Good, Tyler.
Mayor, thank you, city managers for having, I mean, city, city councilors, mayor, and city manager for having me here. If you wasn't, I was going to come anyways. But anyways, the bridge issue, it's been, well, like, let me induce myself, I'm the new president of CBA, and I would like to work with the city, Mr. Manager, city councils. You know what I mean? We're all here for one common goal, that's to make sure that the residents' needs, the community needs are met, and I'd just like to touch on the bridge. In January, I went to a meeting, January twenty-seventh, I believe, last year, that residents did not know about the bridge issue, and it was very concerned about the bridge issue because of, you know, nothing was explained to them. We invited the city many times to come, to listen to the residents, but it was deaf ears, and we are voters, we are citizens of Lowell, and we need to be heard, you know what I mean? Not just when it's election time. The point is that this fifty thousand dollars that I see here, that the engineers that came before us in January twenty-seventh said that they already did appraisal, so we're doing another appraisal on top of appraisal, wasting fifty thousand dollars for the residents of Lowell. You know what I mean? We cannot be doing this if we're giving money away, you know what I mean? I'm pretty sure the youth or the elderly could use this money, or maybe I should run for city council. But anyways, the bridge issue is very touchy because of, we had a vote when the, when the engineers left and the DPW, I mean, DPD guy left, we had a vote, it was about a hundred residents or probably more, we voted unanimous to make sure that alternatives, alternatives, we didn't want that, called five different, it was five different proposals, we heard, and the city did not want the proposal, they just wanted one proposal to go through a certain way, to knock down the church, to knock down some apartments above, above where the church is and stuff like that, and we can't have that. The point is that, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, the other five, the other five plans that yous had, can yous re, look at them, could we come as a community, you know what I mean, to look at them and probably put our heads together to work together instead of butting heads against each other? You know what I mean? It's ridiculous, you know what I mean? We're butting heads against each other, the community butting heads with the city, the city butting heads with CBA, we just want to work together to make sure that the common goals is working so we can work together, you know what I mean? The point is that, you know what I mean, we don't want this to fall on deaf ears, we want to be heard. I'm sick of having meetings with city councils, we have meetings with state reps or the manager and stuff like that, I mean, the mayor, but we want to have meetings with the city manager too, you know what I mean? As well as October, I know the city manager, he was busy, what I got the word for, but in October, if you look, that when we had the ribbon cutting at, at our new facility that was open where the police station used to be, on Suffolk, well, around from Suffolk, forgot the name of the store, anyways, the city manager, he attended there, you know what I mean? He was busy, but he attended there, the ribbon cutting and everything else, you know what I mean, because he was asked, I guess he knows the people to help us build the building or whatever. We're human beings too, city manager.
Yeah, stick to the fifty thousand, Tyler.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I go, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I go off in terms, you know that, but anyways, I just want to make sure that this fifty thousand dollars do not be spent again, because I think it's been ripped off the taxpayers of Lowell, because the engineers said that they already did appraisal, they told us how much it was going to be, we got everything at the office and stuff like that, and how much it's going to be, and, and how the bridge is going to be and stuff like that. We just want to make sure that nothing be done, no votes be carried out, just look into what you have first, what you spent first, what was done first, before you even approve this money for the city manager to spend. It's ridiculous, city councils, if you're going to do this, you know what I mean? I just want to make sure that my voice be heard, the community voice be heard, and thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Tyler. Ken Gordon?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, and Mr. Manager. My name is Ken Gordon. I live here in Lowell at eighty-six Grand Street. I'm also the pastor of Lowell Mission Church, which is located at two eleven Pataca Street and is one of the buildings of which the money would go towards to get appraised. Just to give you a brief background about my involvement as well, two years ago, in December of two thousand and three, I woke up one morning and started reading the newspaper and found out about the city's plans for the new proposed bridge alignment at Merrimack Street. As you can imagine, since that time, I've kind of been on an emotional roller coaster, kind of thinking what's going to happen, take place, where's the church going to go, and things like that. Within the last six to twelve months, I've contacted you, or someone from our organization has contacted most of you, city councilors, I think, except for Counsel Broderick, who wasn't a councilor at the time, and when you were contacted, many of you said that you knew little, if not anything, about the proposed bridge. I also have met with the city manager twice within the last twelve, six to twelve months, and the meetings have gone well, and he has said that the city will be willing to work with the church to help them relocate. So I'm not totally against the new alignment with the new proposed bridge, as long as it is God's will. Each week, you say the Lord's Prayer here before city council and ask for the Lord's will to be done. The building, which is a church, belongs to God, and I'm the pastor of the, of the church, and I'm responsible for the building. My direction comes from prayer, counsel of others, and the Bible. The first two are fallible, the third, according to my opinion, is infallible. That's where I look to answers in this situation. The Bible says in Romans thirteen, to submit to governing authorities, or to cooperate. Titus, chapter three, says to do whatever is good, be peaceable with humility. First Timothy, chapter two, says to pray for authorities, live peaceful lives, and all godliness and holiness, so that all may be saved through Jesus Christ.
Does it say there, build new bridges at any big time?
It says to be accountable, I'm going to get to that in a moment.
Okay.
So therefore, I'm accountable before God as to how I approach this situation. I am willing to cooperate and have the appraisal done, but I have a question to ask. Does a yes vote tonight mean that you, the city councilors, approve of the new proposed project? If it does, I would ask that you delay it so that you may further research to see if it is the best option. If it does not mean that, I would still, again, ask you, city councilors, to do research to see if this proposed bridge is the best one before an eminent domain taking takes place. An ad hoc subcommittee meeting, subcommittee was talked about last spring to address situations that, about bridges in Lowell. Also, I know the traffic subcommittee meeting has met as well on this situation. As city councilors, you are the governing authority. It is your decision whether this historic church building will be demolished or not. As a pastor of the church, I'm willing to cooperate and work with you as you begin your decision-making process. Just a few concerns or things I'd just like to end with and have you think about. Recently, this past summer, you voted for historic neighborhood committees in regards to the situation that happened at the YWCA. Also, you voted to extend the historic district over a year ago so that a church building would be covered in it so it couldn't be torn down. Lowell Mission Church is listed Level A, which is nationally significant on the Register of Historic Places. So just something to consider as well, some of the things, votes that you've taken place as this process begins, again, I'm willing to work with you and hopefully understanding that it's your decision whether the church will be taken down or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Incidentally, when that was registered as a historic place, it abutted a canal, and it was called a CMAC at the time.
Is this, Mr. Manager, appraisal money for the Mission Church?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot that's been said here. First of all, I don't, I never met the gentleman who's the new president of the CBA. If he calls my office, I'd be happy to meet with him. I don't think that he's ever called and reached out to me. I know that, that there was a meeting some months ago, by the time I got the message, the meeting had already taken place. We called the office after the fact, and, and we're told that the thing had already happened. I'd be sure, I'd be certainly more than happy to meet with him, I've never seen the gentleman before, and I'd be certainly happy to talk to him. As far as the pastor is concerned, I'm glad he said that we have met with him, we have explained to him, and his council, by the way, that the reasons why the city and the state think this is the best alignment over the Merrimack River, certainly pointed out the options that we faced, and thought that the reverend understood at the time how the city came to this conclusion. I know the DPD has, has reached out to him recently, I'm sure, as far as relocation, because clearly, we, we understand the work that is done there, and we support it, and the reverend knows that, and he knows that, I think he knows, that this was a, that we looked at many different options and explained to the reverend the reason why we chose the option that was chosen. As far as this being God's will or not, I was only an altar boy for a few years, so I don't unfortunately have a chance to speak with, with God on a, I speak to him, but I don't, he hasn't told me whether he agrees or disagrees with, with, with what we're trying to do. Somebody talked about engineers earlier, I have no idea what they're talking about. Engineers may have been talking about the structure of the bridge, or the safety of the bridge, or something like that. Clearly, what we are talking about tonight is money to do appraisals on the property that need to be taken. As you all know, the process has gone on for some time, we have an opportunity here in the city to, to have a new bridge over the Merrimack River, a real bridge, one that, and decisions were made some time ago in this chamber as to what the direction we should take. When the University Avenue Bridge was deemed to be unsafe, we spent, I think, seven or eight hundred thousand dollars in Chapter Ninety money to make it safe, to open it up, so that city residents would not be burdened with that bridge being closed, university, but clearly, at that time, it was, it was known to all that this was a temporary solution, that this was a five to seven-year solution for the University Avenue Bridge, and we needed, and we're moving in another, in another direction for a new bridge over the Merrimack. I, I know that we met with, because I remember at least one subcommittee meeting in the mayor's reception room, where people from the CBA were there, where people from the Mission Church were there, early on. CBA has certainly made their position clear in the media, although I don't believe everything I read in the media, but they've made their position clear that they are clearly against this proposal, and that's unfortunate, and, but unfortunately, when we have something like this, every, we can't make everybody happy. The appraisal, the money before you this evening is so that DPD can begin to do appraisals on the property that will need to be taken at the end of, at the end of Merrimack Street. Mass Highway, who we worked very closely with through this whole process, and as somebody pointed out, did attend at least one CBA meeting, if not more, have told us that once they get the alignment plan done, that that's how they, they stage it, then the, then the city is responsible for takings, and we've known that all along. Mass Highway is moving forth on their part of the proposal, and, and that's why we're trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit and getting their money appropriated so that we can go out and do appraisals on the properties that need to be taken. Clearly, if appraisals are not done, properties will not be taken, and, and this, this project will not go forth. So I think it's important to move forward on it, I think it's, I think we need to do it. I think if, I don't know why we would not go forth, do the appraisals, find out what the properties are worth, and then begin eminent domain proceedings. That's, that's what we're looking at, and that's what we've always been looking at as far as this project is concerned.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Millenazzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through, through you. I, when I first saw this in the packet, I actually was so concerned about it that I actually thought about objecting to the second reading, because I really feel that there was no information in the packet. I, I know that there have been meetings, and there are, there is a need for a bridge. I am not prepared to vote for this, this evening. I think there's a lot more information that we need to get. I actually serve on the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, which deals with a lot of transportation issues, and for whatever reason, this bridge project is outside of their purview. There have been meetings here with representatives from Mass Highway. I guess option number five has been approved, option number five, allegedly, I haven't seen it, goes through the Mission Church. I'd like to see what the other four options are. I think members of this council would like to see what those other options are. The National Park Service still needs to weigh in on this. Again, ultimately, it may go right where the city manager wants it to go, I may be one of his, his nine votes to have it go there, but I really don't think that from the standpoint of, of input from the neighbors, input from the regional planning agency, which, again, I represent the mayor on that, there has been none, so I just think that this vote for the appraisals, which will need to be done ultimately, does not necessarily
If I may, Mr. Mayor, council members were made aware of all five proposals, maybe it was before you were on the council, I don't know, but certainly, there were subcommittees, and all five proposals were seen by, by council members. Secondly, National Park has weighed in on this and does support this and have from the very beginning. Obviously, this is a complicated matter. If you don't want to go forth on the appraisals tonight, that's fine, but I don't know what more information we can possibly give. I was under the impression that the council supported this alignment, and I'm, I'm still under that impression.
Okay. Hold on, everybody get their hands up.
Again, and again, that may, that may be your opinion, Mr. Manager, but I, I don't believe the National Park Service is on board with this.
They clearly are.
Well, they are.
They clearly are.
So's the university. I don't know where you were.
They clearly are, councillor, so, you know, that's, that's mistaken.
Counsel Budcoffield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The University Avenue Bridge, or the Moody Bridge, Mr. Mayor, as you well know, is 103 years old. It's tired, it's worn, and it has probably a life expectancy of five to six years. There's been some people who have indicated demolish that bridge and replace the bridge in its present location. That would mean the citizens of this city would be without a bridge for at least five years.
More than.
Havoc, traffic havoc, thought the city. Counsel Martin and I, and I believe another colleague, we sat on the traffic subcommittee. We had a meeting with this. I attended a meeting with Senator Panagiotakis, Representative Nangle, Representative Murphy, Representative Golda, in the playing department, with Mass Highway officials, with Peter Sella, National Park, University of Lowell, everyone included, everyone. They're all on board with this new bridge. To build a new bridge and have the state spend 18 to 20 million dollars and put that bridge in the same location where the old bridge is, is ludicrous. This new alignment will give people the opportunity to go up Merrimack Street, right across the bridge, onto the BFW Highway, or the University Avenue, whatever. It's common sense. The manager has indicated, and the council will as well, work with the pastor or the Mission Church or anyone else that is going to be bothered by this imminent domain taking. I've been on board with this bridge for at least two to three years, and I urge my colleagues to support this, because if you don't, we're just going to be spinning our wheels. That bridge is, it's, it's, what, a year, Mr. Manager, we spent $700,000? The clock is ticking. The clock is ticking. And if Mass Highway is willing to come up with the funding, we have to do our part. So I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Counsel Eileen Daniel.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. How many properties does this appropriation for appraisals entail?
I think it's a three, three, maybe four, four, I'm sorry, four.
Four, four properties. And is there a time sensitivity? In other words, if you get an appraisal and it's with the anticipation for eminent domain, doesn't have to be within a particular time?
We, I'm sure it does, but I don't know exactly what that timeframe is, but obviously, our conversation with Mass Highway have been, they would like the city's part of the work to be complete when they complete their part, leading up to it.
So the state would pay for the bridge, but the city takes care of the eminent domain takings?
Correct, correct.
Out of city dollars?
Correct.
Okay. And so they'd want that accomplished before they begin what, not?
They, they do a process, I guess, with, with every bridge, and they have a, I think it's called a alignment or right-of-way alignment or something like that. And, and once they complete that, then, then they're at X percent of, of the project, 30 or 40 percent, whatever it is. And then that's when the eminent domain proceedings kick in from the city. Obviously, the city's got to take the property, and then they go forth with, with the construction.
So do we have any estimate as to when construction would possibly begin from the state?
No, not this, I mean, it all depends on, on when they meet the certain guidelines.
Right. And is the money there from the state to do this?
They have committed to it. They have committed to it, yes.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, the, and, and I think a lot of this predated Counselor Melonazo's term in the council, actually, because with the University Bridge and a lot of the discussions that went on. And so, you know, I guess my question is, you know, going back, that seemed to be the route to go and, and with this particular bridge, but, but it might be worthwhile for the council to just be reeducated or revisit the issue.
That's fine, cool.
And, and, and I guess I'm just trying to get a whole handle on, you know, where, where are we on a timetable, you know, in any problem waiting so that everybody's brought up to speed, when we have at least two new councillors, you know, Counselor Broderick and Melonazo on this, at least on this issue. And so, yeah.
But revisiting wouldn't necessarily mean that we would delay appropriating money for appraisal.
No, I guess, but I, but I do think it makes sense to just, you know, let's have everybody here, you know, and maybe it makes sense to have someone from Mass Highway come again and give us an update as to where we stand and all that.
We'd be happy to do that. Because clearly, the, the appraisals, I mean, you know, we need to get going on the appraisals, clearly. And, and then before any eminent domain proceedings took place, obviously, we need to come back to the council for approval. So I, I'd be happy to have somebody from Mass Highway come up and explain everything to, to councillor-elect, the new councillors, but I, I, that's absolutely no problem. I'm sure we could arrange that.
Okay.
Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think no one will dispute that we do need another bridge, and if I recall, back when the University Bridge was closed, there was discussion about this. But I was, I was here, and I think Counsel Melonazo was here. And were there options that were brought forth to us? Yes, I do recall that, the realignment being one of them. But I don't recall any decision ever being made by the city council to go with this option. In fact, I know an ad hoc subcommittee was put together based on, upon a number of issues, including the Rourke Bridge and, you know, at the time, we had the O'Donnell closed and traffic issues, that before we did proceed with this, that we, that this, at least this option, along with the other four or five, would be presented to, to the council. I, I don't, I think we're all alarmed because I didn't, my recollection is that no one took a vote or to, to proceed with this option.
I, I would disagree with that, councillor. I, I, I remember vividly at least one, if not two, subcommittee hearings in the mayor's reception room where, where all proposals were, were explained and submitted, and I clearly got the sense that the council supported this, this proposal.
I remember that.
That's my recollection.
Well, that, that's, that's probably the case. Maybe you did get a sense, but I don't think there was any definitive vote on this is the option, this is what we need to, to move forward, and is it the best option? It's, it's good to hear that Mass Highway is on board and that we think we have a commitment, but I, I'm not comfortable moving forward on, on this transfer.
We do have a commitment. We don't think we have, we do have a commitment.
Well, where is it? And the council hasn't seen the commitment?
I, I don't know.
Is there a letter saying that the Mass Highway or the state is going to pay for this, and based on past experience? We were also guaranteed a permanent Rourke Bridge. 20 years later, it's not there, so I, I don't want to move forward and spend money on something that may or may not happen. I, I don't think that you would as, as a businessperson or, or anyone else. I mean, and I interrupted you, so I'll, I'll ask for your response. Did, a, a letter, do we have a letter, a signed letter from Mass High, Highway saying yes?
Sure, Steve Curran probably does, yeah. I, I don't know if, I don't know if I've seen a letter. I would assume Steve Curran has. We, they've met, we've met many, many times, so that's, if you want, I mean, totally up, clearly up to the council, do what they want to do, but I, you know, I don't, I don't think this is any surprise to me.
Well, I, I don't think it's, you know, an unreasonable request to, to make sure that before we spend a nickel, that, that we move forward and that we, that we have a letter of commitment saying, yes, we are going, similar to, you know, what we're looking to do with this, with the state. The state's committed. We know we're going to get reimbursed up to 24 million.
I would assume we have that. I, I, I would think that we do, that I would think the engineers have that.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that, and I, I think that'd be the appropriate thing to do. As well as there's a concern, we have a difference of opinion, the National Park Service. If they're on board, then...
Oh, no, no, there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no difference of opinion on the National Park. I don't know where Mr. Counsel Melonazo gets that, but it's wrong. They clearly are on board. They were on board from the beginning.
I don't think so, Mr. Manager.
As the man from the CBA said, they signed a memorandum of undergr, of understanding, councillor. So they are clearly on board.
You have, you have walls there, Mr. Manager, there are historic walls that need to be looked at.
And it's all been discussed. It's all been discussed, councillor.
Counsel, Counsel Elliot has the floor.
Well, I'll follow up on the question. A memorandum of understanding doesn't define what option we're going to do.
Yes, it does, councillor.
Well, where is that letter, Mr. Manager?
I don't know. I assumed you guys had seen that years ago. I'll get it to you.
Well, with, I mean, with all due respect, you're asking us to take a leap forward spending $50,000 for appraisals.
Well, don't, don't do it then.
That are going to affect these folks and their community, and I think we just want some answers to, before we make this vote.
And councillor, I fully, obviously, thought you had those answers. They come as a surprise to me, that, that, that you don't, clearly, at least some of your colleagues had the same feeling that I had. I'll get whatever we have. I'll get you the memorandum of understanding from, from the National Park and the university. They are clearly on board, have been from the beginning, so I want that clear. That's, they, they were on board from the very beginning, and we've discussed this before, and I'll be happy to produce whatever I need to produce.
Well, I appreciate that, and I don't think there's any disagreement, again, Mr. Manager, that there is full agreement that we need a new bridge. I mean, the engineering reports will say that, you know, it was a temporary fix, there was complete agreement, we have to move forward on, on building a permanent structure. I have to say, I didn't attend the subcommittee meeting if it was presented at that subcommittee meeting, so I've not seen all the options, and if that was the case, subcommittees typically bring the recommendation forward on what proposal should be adopted. I don't recall that coming from the subcommittee.
I'm sure you can remember when, when the University Avenue Bridge needed to be repaired, there was much discussion in this chamber as to what we were going to do about a permanent bridge. It was fully discussed, because otherwise, we would not have spent $800,000 to fix the University Avenue Bridge for a lifespan of five to six years.
Well, we had to spend, we had to spend that. That was the only option.
No, we didn't have to spend it.
Or keep it closed. And the city would be gridlocked.
That was, that was, certainly was an option. You're right. And the reason we did that was because we were talking about you having a new bridge in a different footprint. Now, that's, you know, that, that was clearly discussed here.
I, I don't disagree, Mr. Manager, but if there are four or five options, those were discussed. So I, I think we're splitting words here. There were proposals discussed, there were options, this council didn't vote on the option that's before us. That's, that's my recollection.
Counselor Howe.
Yeah, I, I certainly would strongly urge the council to refer this matter to the Economic Development Subcommittee. And I don't know of any clock that's ticking, other than somebody wanting to...
Move forward.
To gather up and to, I don't want to be obnoxious, but I also want to get a point across that what we ought to be doing is to commit the city and the state to the minimum cost. To do anything else would be a monumental mistake. Just look at what happened with the O'Donnell Bridge. We made a career out of that. The citizens of Pawtucketville and Centerville, the hours and days and weeks and months because of the delays and the failure to follow through on the part of the city and dealing with the issue. Now, here we are, we're talking about a, a, a brand-new location, a, a bridge that probably would be much longer and wider and much more expensive, when all that is really needed is what is there, and, 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 and there for the purpose of transporting people, but also for the purpose of spending the minimum amount of money available, and that has to be spent. To go forward on this particular proposal, with the amount of money that was spent by this city on Maristet Boulevard, and, and the traffic pattern that we have, from Bridge Street to Maristet Boulevard to the Pawtucket, to Pawtucket Street, is more than satisfactory. And to start talking about dumping all the traffic on Merrimack Street, which incidentally is, is, is two lanes, one going north and one going south, into a four-way, a four-way bridge, and then back into a two-way street, doesn't make any sense. We should spend the minimum amount of money, and we should do it with the least possible commitment on the part of the city. So I'd like to make the motion to refer the, the matter to the Economic Development Subcommittee, that is, Mr. Counsel Melonazo's Subcommittee.
Hearing no second.
Second.
Second by Counsel.
Well, you want to second it too.
The motion, the motion by Counselor Howe, seconded by Counsel Elliot, that the transfer request to do appraisal works be referred to the Economic Development Subcommittee. Roll call.
Can I be heard on the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We haven't had a chance to overhear it.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd point out there, there is a Subcommittee on Bridge Construction that was formed, I think, when this issue first arose, and that, I, I would think may be the, the more appropriate committee, but in any event...
Well, let me, let me correct that. Is that okay?
A joint, a joint Subcommittee.
Motion by Counselor Howe, seconded by Counsel Elliot, that the transfer be submitted to the Subcommittee already existing about the bridge. Counselor Martin.
Okay. And I'd say a joint Subcommittee, the Bridge Subcommittee and the, okay, economic.
But if I, I'd like to at least stay with what my memory of the sequence of events here is, because I think, I haven't disagreed with a lot of what's been said here. I think Counselor Caulfield is right. He and I did attend a meeting in the DPD conference room with members of the National Park Service, with members of the state delegation, with representatives from Mass Highway, with members from UMass Lowell, because there was a lot of controversy, I guess, or question about what's the best alignment for this bridge would be. There was, as, as I felt coming out of that meeting, a pretty strong sense that this proposed alignment with Merrimack Street was something that was achievable and that the parties in the room were willing to work toward. However, I do think, and I don't recall that the council ever having gone on record with a vote of the council saying, this is the location we endorse. I, as, we've been hearing from these folks for a number of months, and in fact, what I've been telling them, and I think what they heard initially, was no decision or no final decision has been made yet. I actually think this vote and transfer and the appraisals is a big part of the, the decision that's going to need to be made, what the cost of those takings is going to be. I'm actually encouraged to hear the pastor here tonight saying he's had positive discussions with the city manager about being relocated to another location. I don't think that's done yet. We don't really know what that cost is, and I think from the city's point of view, that's a major thing that the city council needs to know to take a vote, to say, yes, it should go here. We're going to have to take the land to make it go here, and I don't think we've done that yet. I think, yes, members of the council, at least the, the committee members that have been with this, did, from speaking for myself anyway, said, this is the road that we should be going down. At least see what this is going to entail. If the state is cooperative, the state wants to build this, because that wasn't always the case. There's going to be more miles of road, I think, for this bridge because of the curve and, and the relocation. It's a longer bridge now that's going to cost more, and the state is willing to do that now. At least I think that's, that wasn't always the case in the beginning. We heard that that was going to be the case. So, you know, from my point of view, I don't think the council has gone on record. I do think, in the end, I'm going to probably conclude that this is the best location, and I think the major issue is because it allows the bridge that's there to stay in service while we construct a new bridge. The other alternatives all call for that bridge to be taken out of service, which I don't think the city could live with. So the council wants to send this to a Subcommittee for, you know, further review of this appropriation. If there's no time sensitivity, I don't object to that, but I do think the, the manager is right, that he got a sense from us that this is the road we should be going down. I do disagree that, that there's been a vote. I don't think there has been any votes on this. So that, that's my memory of what happened here.
Counselor Rena Musia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What Counselor Martin previously said is completely the way that I see it as well, so that when I did see the question before us tonight as a vote to appropriate $50,000 for the appraisals, I was not going to support that, because I didn't have enough information to say that. I don't remember voting on, on this particular... I don't remember voting on, on this particular option number five for the bridge to go there, and I'm not saying that that's not the best choice, or it's the worst choice, or whatever, but I, I do see a concern there with the Mission Church and all that they do, and all the money that they spent to refurbish that and make it a state-of-the-art facility as a church and a drop-in center when we're talking about the youth of our city. They go there. I'd hate to see that happen. If that's the only alternative, then, like, I leave it in the hands of God, like the pastor says. I, I wouldn't really want it to go there as well, but is there another available site? It, I, I know that we talked about, and I attended the meetings too, is there another alternative site? Could we put it in the same footprint? I wouldn't support that, because tearing the bridge down and leaving it with no access and bottleneck the Rourke Bridge and other portions, I wouldn't want to do that either. So, having a bridge being constructed while the old bridge is in service to have people go across, back and forth across the bridge, is the only thing that makes sense to me. Plus, there's a big price tag. If we go on the same footprint, I think they said something like $3 million it would be costing the city for us to take it down, and I wouldn't want to put the taxpayers further burden by that expense. I wish there were another option two that says that you could go down Pawtucket Street and straight across. Are those people going to be upset? Maybe they'd be the same upset as this. I, I, I don't really know, but I think it's warranted to take another look with the Mass Highway Department coming before with another meeting, and please, let this time notify the people to see if we could all get some input in this. It's, it's to be courteous to people. I mean, I think people ultimately know that if that's the only alternative and it's eminent domain, we're going to try to do everything we can to relocate you somewhere, and then we're all understanding that, but to have everybody not understanding what's going on, and I'm one of them, I, I don't know, this option five is set in stone, and I told the people, I don't recall voting for this to happen, so let's take another look at it and see if we can be on the same page, and make everybody work together for the goodness of the city and God.
Counselor Broderick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, Counselor Martin brought up a good point. Is there any time crunch that the city's under to, to get this, uh, the appraisals done immediately?
No, no, I don't think so, Counselor. I just think, you know, we, we felt in, in, in dealing with, with Mass Highway that, uh, these had to be done, and just want to get them done the better. I mean, you know, clearly, um, what we don't want to do is, is be in a situation where Mass Highway gets to a point and we're, we're not there with them. But I, I don't know, I don't think there's any time, you know, drop dead, drop dead date or anything.
Okay, because I-
Everybody's, go ahead.
I, uh, being new, as it was mentioned, I don't have really any information as to, uh, what the options were, and I'm sure this was discussed, and probably is the best option, but if we could maybe get, uh, if, if I could see that and also what the cost of the taking-
Motion by Counselor Howe, seconded by Counselor Elliott, that this matter be referred to the Subcommittee on Bridge Construction, and I think it's God's will that this goes there.
If only we could walk on water, we wouldn't need the bridge.
All in, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion's approved. The matter will be referred to the Subcommittee on Bridge Construction. The next item is a vote authorizing the city manager to execute a parking easement agreement with the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association for 65 parking spaces in a municipal parking facility to be located on Middlesex Street in the city of Lowell. Motion by Counselor Rita Mercia, seconded by Counselor Broderick, that the first reading be waived. Anyone opposed to the first reading being waived, say aye. Opposed? No. Second reading by title, if there are no objections. Authorizing the city manager to execute a parking easement agreement with the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association for 65 parking spaces in a municipal parking facility to be located on Middlesex Street in the city of Lowell. Any questions from the counselors? Roll call. Whoops, Counselor Elliott.
Um, well, I guess I'm kind of curious why we're, um, executing a lease and the property hasn't been built yet. What is the, what's the reason?
Matt?
I'm sorry. Executing what, Counselor? I, I didn't hear.
Why executing a lease?
But why are we proceeding with this at this point? The bil- the garage hasn't been built yet.
Uh, I believe it's, it's part of the agreement. We have the CMAA, and we're, we're going forth on, on their buildings, so, on their property, I, I would assume.
I did, I did read that-
I think he could, uh, explain it a little bit further.
Just to clarify, this is exactly the same terms that the council voted as part of the taking back in the spring. Now that the demolition of the Barney's Block is complete, the next stage is within two weeks, we will start removing the five underground storage tanks. So, as a result, the CMAA asked that we actually execute the easement for the terms that we had already, or this body had already voted on. So, in some sense, it's just paper keeping, but it was at their request that we actually execute that agreement, which is required as a separate vote from the taking which was done back in the spring. But it is the exact same terms as were brought to this council before.
Under the prior agreement.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Counselor Bud Caulfield.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, just a few questions. I heard on the radio coming down here, some figures, and I just did some simple math. It's, what is it, $48 per space per month for a parking spot in the garage?
Right now, the market rate, uh, is $64 a month. There is a 25% discount that the council voted if you are a downtown resident.
Yeah. I'm coming up with approximately, uh, $1,123,000 over the span of 30 years.
Okay.
The property that we're going to be given, instead of taken by eminent domain, if we had to go out and borrow the money for that, the interest and so forth, it'd be around $750,000. Plus, we're taking the 65 parking spots that's the CMMA now has. Is that so?
Correct. Again, just to recap, the deal that was brought to the council in the spring was to acquire the property really through a friendly taking in exchange for the land, which was the single largest parcel that we needed for the garage. And again, the praise value was $550,000.
Right.
What we paid was $25,000, and as part of the agreement for the taking, offered 65 spaces for a term of 30 years. CMA, much like other property owners, they were not interested in the cash. They have to have parking availability, not only for their own use, but for the use across the street. They are in a, a lease arrangement with the apartments across the street to provide 20 or 25 spaces. So again, as part of that negotiation, it was determined that a very nominal cash amount was in their best interest. That was the 25,000, and that what they really needed was the parking spaces, and we came to an agreement of 65 spaces for 30 years.
The, the figure I heard coming down here was $2 million, and I, I just wanted to bring that up in the open and clarify it so-
I would say that that's grossing out there.
Was that on a three o'clock show?
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Eileen Dunne.
Thank you. Um, Matt, my recollection too is that CMAA had some 120 spaces that they're giving up in return for-
That's correct. If you were to maximize the surface lot that we acquired, that's correct.
All right, so they're, they're getting half the spaces that they are, they have now.
Correct.
And so, I mean, that's part of, part of the deal too. So, I, I think that's getting lost in the discussion and shuffle as well, so.
Right, and should their demand increase in the future, as you know, the Architectural Heritage Foundation is planning to renovate that building, all of that will be leased spaces within the garage itself.
Right, at the market rate.
Correct.
Counselor Rita Mercia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to comment on this. People are under the impression through the radio that we're giving the store away, and I find that not to be true. I want to commend CMAA for coming up front and negotiating with the city in a fair way to say that, uh, yes, we'll work a deal here. I don't think the city has given anything away exorbitantly. I think, first of all, thank you, CMAA, for allowing us to, to have that, or there would not be a garage at all, and the investment down the road in the long run is going to bring businesses here, they'll have a place to park. I think this is a good deal, and I think that CMAA just asking for parking spaces, and you can put a figure and say, "It's worth 30 million," or whatever you want to say it is, but in reality, it isn't. The investment that the city is making will far outweigh what they think we're giving the store away.
If the taxpayers of this city, or the citizens and the voters thought we were giving the store away, we would have heard from them, and not only one or two people.
That's right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call.
Counselor Rita Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Milonazo.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Howe.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Amon Mercia.
Yes. The next vote is to authorize the city manager to accept an easement from Riverfront Development LLC to the city of Lowell for the purpose of using and maintaining as a public park and walking path, properly located Apostle One as shown in the plan entitled A-N-R Plan, Lawrence Mills Redevelopment, Lowell, Massachusetts, and more specifically depicted as benches and brick strip on a sketch plan entitled Riverwalk Bench Easement Plan at Renaissance on the River in the city of Lowell, which we all know as the Lawrence Mills Project. Motion by Counselor Broderick, seconded by Counselor Martin, we waive the first reading. All in favor of waiving the first reading, say aye. Opposed? First reading is waived. Second reading by title, if there are no objections. It's a vote authorizing the city manager to accept an easement from the Riverfront Development to the city of Lowell for the purpose of using and maintaining as a public park and walking path, properly located Apostle One, as shown on a plan entitled A-N-R Plan for the Lawrence Mills Redevelopment, Lowell, Massachusetts, and more specifically depicted as benches and brick strips on a sketch plan entitled Riverwalk Bench Easement Plan at the Renaissance on the River in the city of Lowell. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Counselor Rita Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Milonazo.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Howe.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Amon Mercia.
Yes. We have an order here to revoke, revocation of an order for 411 Bridge Street, Lowell, Mass. The owner was Equitireen Panzakzupulis, 1857 Bridge Street, Drakehead, Mass. Motion by Counselor Rita Mercia, seconded by Counselor Bud Caulfield, that they waive the first reading. All in favor of waiving the first reading, say aye. All opposed? First reading is waived. Second reading by title, if there are no objections. Oh, I got to repeat that name again, huh? Revocation of our property, 411 Bridge Street, Lowell, Mass, by the owner, Equitireen Panzakzupulis, 1875 Bridge Street, Drakehead, Mass. You all did get a copy of the letter from the DPD regarding this. Are there any questions for the revocation of this order? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselor Rita Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Milonazo.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Howe.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Amon Mercia.
Yes. Are there any Subcommittee reports? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, the council has a joint Subcommittee with the School Committee on New School Construction that met earlier, uh, this evening. That, um, the purpose of that committee was to discuss the two, uh, new proposed schools that were in the original school building program, uh, brought forth some, I don't know, 10 or 15 years ago to the council. The short of it is, the Subcommittee recommended that, uh, that the full council approve taking necessary steps to proceed, uh, with these proper, with, with proper votes and appropriations to continue these school building program projects. I think the, uh, the first vote that would be necessary would be a vote to allow the architect to complete construction drawings sufficient that we could go out to bid on these, uh, schools and see what the actual cost of them would be. We do have estimates, uh, of those costs that were generated by the architect and school department, as well as some enrollment projections and things like that. Uh, all those things were made available to the Subcommittee. I've given copies to the manager this evening and asked him to make copies available to the full council, uh, and I, and I know the school committee is going to get to the manager's office a proposal on the amount of funding that would be needed, at least for this first step proceeding with the architectural drawings. That's the first step that would be necessary, uh, and perhaps could even be acted on next week. The sooner the better. We are locked in with the School Building Assistance Program, which now has a different name under the state. We do have 90% reimbursement. However, we're only 90% reimbursed for a fixed cost, and construction costs continue to escalate, and so the longer we wait, the more the project is going to cost, and so 90% reimbursement comes more like 85% reimbursement. So, um, in any event, that was the recommendation of the committee, and the matter will be back before the full council as soon as possible, hopefully as soon as next week.
Recommendation is motion by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Bud Caulfield, recommend the city council approve the city taking the necessary steps to proceed to bring forward the proper votes and appropriations to continue with the school building projects as recommended. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion's approved. Also, motion of Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Bud Caulfield, that the report be a report of progress. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? It's a report of progress. Are there any other Subcommittee reports? Hearing none?
No, I have a Subcommittee.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. The ad hoc Subcommittee on the Stocklosses School met this evening regarding, um, two motions from Counselor Howe, and it was sort of a continuation as, uh, getting some information, additional information on, uh, construction issues at, at the school. Uh, we did learn that, um, the punchless items continue to be addressed, um, and the work is ongoing. City Solicitor O'Connor indicated there's approximately $150,000 to $200,000 left in punchless items, uh, that have yet to be completed, and, um, Mr. Walsh and, and Mr. Guthrie are the onsite clerk, onsite clerk, as Mr., uh, Mr. Souza is out on medical leave. The number of items, um, that we, that we discussed, including, um, requests for payment and current status of, of where we are financially, and, and I do want to ask the, the auditor, Mr. Auditor, uh, who is, who is not at the meeting, and that, my apologies for, for not inviting you, but there was some, um, concern as to where we are, how much money is left over. There's two outstanding payments of $720,000 and, uh, a second payment of about $400,000 that is still, uh, remaining on the school. Uh, there was some, um, confusion, uh, at least on my part, as to what is left in the actual construction loan, uh, to pay these outstanding bills, and does that include , uh, retainage that the city would naturally hold back after the completion of the project? Mr. Auditor, can, can you tell us? Can you answer that? I know you were, you were talking to the Solicitor, but-
I, uh, will get your report, because I, uh, don't have all the information, I'll tip my fingers right to prison.
Okay, I, I guess the long and the short of it is that there's still 1.2, approximately 1.2 million in outstanding bills waiting to be paid. Um, I, I didn't think that we had that much left in the account. My, my memory, um, seems to indicate that-
Well, there was, there was seven-
That there was only 800,000. Now Christine is, is, is saying no. I mean, uh, we did pay the last bill for, for services that were rendered back in August of this year, in the amount of 210,000. I know that you were holding that payment in abeyment, abeyance, and the balance was around 800,000, which included the retainage, which led us to the $290,000 that was paid, uh, that was paid in arbitration. So, there is confusion as to how much we've paid, the contract price of, of, of the school, what's left to be paid, and, and, and what is available, um, in the city account. what's left to be paid, and, and what is available in the city account.
I rela-, you know, the last report that I had given you had the, everything was exact on there. There was about $800,000 that was set aside for retainage. He had encumbrances, I, off the top of my head, I was going to say about $200,000. And if there was, then there was no bills in hand at that time. So, my best thing is to come up with a report of actuals, what we have at the present time, and that give you a better idea of what we have.
Okay, can we get that report sooner rather than later? I mean, it's been several weeks now that, you know, we, we had the executive session and, and actually...
I'll try to give it to you for Friday.
The cost of what it's all about, the solicitor's telling us 1.2, and, and we did hear from you that there's 800,000. We need to get our hands around this to find out where we are and, and where we're going because it pertains to, to litigation and, which is the next point that was discussed in, in the subcommittee. There's been no formal litigation. I don't know if I'm using the exact language, but the solicitor did it, did inform us that we have filed a notice of claim. And, and the solicitor can explain it better than I, but essentially that we are putting the contractor on notice that we, you know, we will be pursuing issues in the future relative to, to litigation. Is that a good summation? So, we, we have proceeded with some legal proceedings. It's not formal, there's not a lawsuit, so to speak, that have been filed and with a specific number. We're, we're trying to get our, our, our hands around that and, and that report will be helpful. I did look at the report that you gave us, Mr. Fernandez, dated August 24th, because in the subcommittee meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Solicitor, I, I thought we were told that nothing has been paid for design of that school. And this report seems to indicate that 1.5 million has been, has been expended at this point for design and engineering services and not 11,000 for professional services. Can you tell us what that is?
Right, I don't have the, I don't have the report in front of me, but I can tell you that with respect to what has been paid to the architect, at the time that the issue regarding the classrooms first surfaced, sometime after that, there has been a, the city has not gone forward on, on payments to the architect. With respect to the value engineering, we had immediately looked at that at the time that this issue came about because under the contract for the value engineering, the architect had a certain scope of services. It was to be completed within a set period of time. That time wasn't met, unfortunately. However, the payment was pretty much all, all made at that, at that time. And whatever was left, I believe, wasn't, wasn't then paid. So, it wasn't that there, there had been no funds paid to the, to the architect by any means, but that once these problems arose and looking at, at some of the potential other problems down the road, that was the action that we had taken.
Okay, thank you. And the last item, there was discussion and, and I think we'll need to get the report as to the $290,000 settlement, which has been an issue that has been concerned to the subcommittee and to the council as a whole. Because my understanding, and I said this in the subcommittee and I'll say it here, the original bid for the contract was $17,095. And I just want to sort of clarify, you know, for the people watching at home and try to separate the, because it is very complex. There's a number of change orders and change directives and, and the timeframes that they were submitted and, and DRA is saying, "We didn't tell you to take the classrooms out." And Jackson is saying, "Yes, you did." And, and at a cost of, of 75,000. And then, I didn't see the newspaper tonight, but it was brought up in the subcommittee, the clerk of the works said it would have only cost 10,000 to put them back in. So, while, you know, we're being told to keep this quiet executive session and, and to protect the city's interests, which we all want to do, you know, there's information coming out that is jeopardizing our position and, and that's a concern. I mean, either we're going to air this out in public or, you know, or, or we're not. And, and I'm for putting it out in public, but I don't want to jeopardize the city's position either. So, that was, that was, you know, a concern. So, and again, my point is, 17095, the contract bid. The issues of the city shortfall is unrelated to the contract bid. That company bid on a building that included those three classrooms. And if there was a shortfall on the city side as a result of other issues, whether it was, whether it was additional contamination or, or other issues, that's unrelated, in my opinion. That's the only way that, that I can put the argument together. And, and that's why we have requested in the subcommittee a breakdown of, we don't want the minutes of, of the mitigation or jeopardize the, the agreement that was put in place. But I, I'd like to know an itemization or a list of what that 290 was for and, and what it was for. And was it not covered? In my opinion, it was covered in the original contract. So, that, that's a, it's a report of progress, you know, with that request for, for that information. And it was, it was a lengthy meet, I'm sure there'll be other, other comments, but that's the report I'd like to bring forward.
Thank you. Councilor Howe?
Yes, I attended that subcommittee meeting also. And what, what is the retainage that remains in the city auditor's office? Did you say it was 200,000? How much is the retainage that we're withholding?
The retainage they were holding is around $777,000.
Okay. Now, I suggest to this council, and I do so in, in very clear and, and, and accurate terms, that that money should be frozen. We should not allow one red cent of that $700,000 retainage escape the city auditor's control, primarily because of the amount of money that it appears and the circumstantial evidence supports that is owed by Jackson to the City of Lowell. Now, this after, at the subcommittee meeting, the solicitor said, and I confirmed it in a follow-up question, that Jackson will give us backup data on the 290,000 that we paid them for the alleged three classroom disaster. Now, I then asked the solicitor, what's the, what did we rely on? And what we relied on was a report that was submitted by Jackson to the city in September of '04. That was the report that I understand the manager relied on in unilaterally paying Jackson $290,000. Now, bear in mind, this is right smack in the middle of mediation. They had a mediation session in April of 2005. It was continued to sometime later. Now, to say at this time, after 14 months, that we don't have backup data to what they had originally supplied to us, that I think there ought to be some action taken by this city council to demand it, to demand the backup data from Jackson or from wherever else it's supposed to come from, as a means of resolving the $290,000 that was paid by the city to Jackson for a purported damage that they incurred as a result of the three classroom disaster that we all are well, well aware of.
Any other comments on the subcommittee report? Councilor Eileen Donahue.
Thank you. One of the things that we did request was the backup data and proof that the subs or proof that the payments were made by Jackson, if, if indeed part of that backup data is payments made to subs. My understanding is that at the time that that list was submitted, it was, I'd call it an estimate of, of what expected cost would have been because some of them would not have been realized at that point in time. However, by this point in time, they certainly would have been realized. And, and again, in light of a news report in, in the paper that subs are claiming they were not paid any more monies and, and that they were told that it was part of their original bid, I think it, it certainly is important that the city pursue that and find out what Jackson's costs were and that they indeed were solid costs. If, if it turns out they weren't, then what was, we discussed at the subcommittee is that the city may have recourse because the city based its decision in large part by these representations. If they're not true or if they're, were inaccurate, then, then it may invalidate that, that whole process. So, I think it's, it's important that we, we get that information, which the manager and the solicitor told us at the subcommittee they would pursue and provide the council with, now that the project or at least the construction of it is, is concluded. I think the solicitor, Mr. Mayor has...
Ms. Solicitor?
Right, I, I wholeheartedly agree. And, and again, just to be clear, that, that's always what was intended, that's always what was contemplated by the law department because, you know, at heart, that information is needed in the city's case, that it will be pursuing on behalf of Jackson's claims. So, I agree that, you know, we're, we're pretty much at that stage now and that we'll be getting that information.
And just to follow up, if, if part of the, the, this negotiated settlement was that the city was going to, that Jackson, and my understanding was, was going to assign its claims against the architect, which we discussed in open session, and that the city would pursue those. Well, if the claim is, is, is not built on a strong foundation because we lack the evidence, then, then we've got to go back to the drawing board and say that we were misled or there was fraud or, or what have you. But, but the first step is, and by the way, I, I don't know. I mean, I just know what I read in the paper tonight, that at least three or four subs are saying, "We were told it was part of our original bid and no extra monies were going to be paid." So, we really have to pursue and, and get the proof.
Which we will get. Councilor Elliott?
I, I did want to follow up. There was a request made in the subcommittee for all payments that were, that were submitted. And I did ask the auditor, before any payment is made, an application has to be submitted to you, correct, Mr. Rutter? And, and that would reflect what the payment is for, how much is it for, and, and what it is for, quite frankly. And I think that's where we need to look at, to look at those payments and an itemized list of exactly what, what it included. Because within the subcommittee, Councilor Caulfield brought up something that really made me more concerned as to, you know, the validation of these payments, that the last payment that was submitted included ceiling of a tennis court when, and it was certified by the architect and the work was never performed. So, one has to start thinking and questioning the other payments, what was included, and that the city get what it was, that, that we pay for what we were given or not. You know, based upon how this project has gone, I'd be very skeptical that there weren't some other payments that were made for services that weren't provided. So, Mr. Auditor, when you receive an application, what does that include?
Usually, the application's backed up by the work to be performed, that was performed.
Okay, and that has to be, excuse me for interrupting, but that has to be signed naturally by the architect, which at this point, the credibility is, is rather marginal in my concern based upon this last payment where he certified that the work was done and it was never complete. Who else will sign, would sign off to, to ensure that the work was done?
I would think the...
I presume it's got to be the clerk, the clerk on site?
I would think, I would think Ed Suza and Ed Walsh would have to sign it also.
Okay. Well, I, I think that'll be important to get that information and, and validate that the payments have been made and that, you know, and I agree with Councilor Howe, before we pay any more money out, let's get this information and make sure that we haven't been charged for things that, that haven't been done, including, well, we're saying there's no value engineering, but I hope we're not paying for any landscaping that hasn't, you know, included in these payments that haven't been done. So, I'd like to get a list of this information and go through, go through the...
We haven't paid for the, for any of the landscaping. And again, the payment, what is, what, the only payment that was released was August. So, they still have billed us, you know, September, October, and I, and I think they might have also billed, billed now for November. So, we have been holding the, the money and, and we'll continue to do that until all these issues are...
So, for all of those costs that the city incurred for, for landscaping, et cetera, has it, has a credit been issued to the city?
There was, apparently there were credit negotiations with the school department and the architect and, and the contractor. And I can take a look to see where, where those are. The, part of what, I, I believe, part of what has stalled that particular credit issue is with certain shifting personnel, staffing issues that, that you were made aware of in the subcommittee meeting. Some, some sign-offs haven't been, been had, so...
Well, I, I tell you, there's a lot of, there seems to be a lot of fuzzy issues that we, we haven't addressed here. And, and I support Councilor Howe, and I'll, I'll put it in the form of a motion that we don't make any more payments to anybody until we get a full accounting of, as to where we are and where we are going and what we spent our money on. Because there's 810,000 in retainage. That, that's typically not to be used for normal construction. That's a holdback for any flaws that we may see in the system. There's only 300,000 left, as, as I can see it from this latest report, unless things have changed. And if what you're telling us is correct, we have 1.2 million in outstanding bills. Well, that, we asked a couple of times...
What I, what I had indicated, what I, what I had indicated in the subcommittee meeting is that I believe there are pending bills going back to September, to the present, that amount to around, somewhere around $700,000. Nothing beyond that.
Well, I, my notes indicate that, you indicated there were two payments, one for 720 and then another one for 400. And the 400...
No.
Included the tennis court ceiling that never took place.
No, then there was a, a misunderstanding and, and maybe that was, that was on my part. But no, the, the tennis court issue was an issue that I had brought up during the meeting and it's something that we just became aware of just this past week as the result of Mr. Walsh stepping in and, and, and looking at this stuff. It was certified by the architect as being complete and in fact, it wasn't. That is included in these $700,000 and that's the only payment that's, that's outstanding.
Okay, well, that was, that was a motion, a, a motion that I made that I, I don't think we should be making any more payments until, until this is all...
Right, we haven't been.
Councilor Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to ask procedurally if it's appropriate for motion now. The solicitor seemed to indicate there are outstanding bills and that we're not going to make any payments till the litigation's resolved. Is that the position?
We're not going to make any payments right now and, and that's until a lot of these other issues are fully and finally resolved. As far as, as far as the litigation, we'll, you know, we'll eventually at some point in time close out this, this project. But before that happens, we'll, you know, we'll be sending a report to the council. We can go into executive session. Whatever, you know, we can take whatever steps need to be done to completely clarify any, any confusion or any issues that, that may exist.
Would we be jeopardizing any position of the city if we freeze the account and say no more payments? Is that going to...
Well, again, we, that's pretty much what we have been doing, going back to, going back to August. And, and it was only recently that we had paid 200,000 and that was in an effort to help free up some money to get contractors back on site so we can finish up the punch lists and, and get this project completed.
Is there an issue now of finishing the punch list and making more payments?
I'm sure to some degree, but that was, that was our sort of final position with respect to the releasing of the funds.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll second Counselor Elliott's...
Well, hold on. Is it a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's your motion? I, I thought you said you were going to bring in a motion.
No, I, I will make the motion that no further payments be made on the Stocklossa School project until we have a report from the auditor and a complete accounting as to how much we spent, how much we owe and what those payments are for. It's just trying to protect the city's position. I, I thought it was clear that we weren't going to send any, you know, we, we were not going to pay any more. And, and we did know of that 210. I, I presume that we weren't going to pay any more and, and that differs from, from the solicitor, so that's why I am making the motion.
Seconded by Councilor Howe. Any questions on the motion?
I just...
Councilor Caulfield?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to ask the solicitor, would that affect the, the punch list that's presently going on?
It's possible. I mean, that was the, that was the final rationale of, of releasing the, the 200,000, which again, goes all the way back to the, the end of the summer. Those are the payments from the end of the summer, the 200, 210,000 or whatever that exact sum was. So, it's possible, but we had discussions with Jackson and hopefully the money that was freed up is enough money that will get this project, as far as the punch list items go, get the project wrapped up, and then we can deal with all other outstanding issues.
There's one punch list that has to be addressed, and that's the flashing over the window on, on School Street. And that, Mass Electric's coming in to, to kill the electrical system so they can fix that. Now, if we're opening up Pandora's Box here, I, I don't know.
Councilor Eileen Donahue on a motion?
Look, I, I don't have any objection to holding back monies to make certain that you have some leverage, but we want to make certain that, you know, the, the heat's working and, and you don't want a sub walking off the job because you can't balance the heating system. I mean, they were having problems there. So, you know, I, my only concern is that we don't tie the hands of making sure emergency things are taken care of. So, if that can be done, I don't know, you know, but we want to make sure that there's heat in the school and that this other electrical issue is addressed.
Councilor Elliott?
Let me be clear, I, I'm not trying to be difficult for the sake of being difficult. But this building was promised to be completed in June of this year. It's, it's six months later. And I think that the city has been more than amenable and, and... It's six months later, and I think that the city has been more than amenable and reasonable in trying to get the school built for the children. But they seem to push us to a limit where we have, you know, no other option except to be, you know, to take legal proceedings. I don't think this Council wanted to from day one. We just wanted to build the school, pay for it, and get what we deserve. So, I understand, you know, I mean, it's a $22 million building. I mean, I would hope that the emergency issues are addressed and that there's heat, and I mean, it seems like we're sort of just, you know, hoping for these things to happen, and it is a touchy situation, I understand, but I think the people that paid for this, the people in the city and the kids going to the school deserve more, and if they want to walk away from these issues, you know, shame on them, it's a lesson learned, but I think that the Council and the people in the city deserve more and what we paid for.
I just have one question on the motion. Would that cause any, would that hamper the Law Department's effort to close out this project?
Well, I mean, eventually, the project has to be closed out, and certain monies have to be paid, but what we can do is, you know, we'll continue to work with the contractor and to address these things. Again, just to be clear, with respect to the 200,000 that was paid, it was paid specifically so that we could free up some funds so that item number one, the leaking roof, would get fixed. Item number two, equally important, was that the school be, the heating system be maintained. The subcontractors involved in the second issue would not come back onto the site without additional funds. So, that's what we're trying to do. I don't think it will necessarily, you know, hamper us to any great degree because, quite frankly, that was the course of action that we had been following, it's a course of action that the manager had been following, and if it gets to the point where it is going to hamper, we'll just immediately come back to the Council and discuss it in executive session.
Okay, I think that's fair. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion's approved. But please do come back if it does cause a problem. Under petitions, we have one property damage claim by Counsel Rita Mercia, second by Counsel Martin, referred to the Law Department. Excuse me, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, it's approved. And then we have a miscellaneous petition for a handicap parking sign for a realist in Kansion. Motion by Counsel Broderick, second by Counsel Rita Mercia, that this be referred to the traffic engineer. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion's approved. The first motion of the evening, by Counsel Milonazzo. City Council requests city manager have the proper department explore the feasibility of placing evergreen screening along the Lowell Connector. Seconded by Counsel Rita Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I threw you to the manager. At last Thursday's bimonthly Lowell Plan Meeting, we were actually asked to bring in short-term and long-term goals, and one of the board members mentioned screening along the Lowell Connector, which I guess had been talked about about 15 or 20 years ago, and just to give Counsel Caulfield credit and others for the work that's been done there lately after that tragic accident, the idea of now doing some additional work along the, I guess it would be the inbound lane of the connector coming into the city to really do some evergreen screening along that, I guess, the Tanner Street side of the connector. So, if that could be looked at either by the state or maybe the CDBG program might be able to provide some funds to take a look at that as well.
Counsel Bud Caulfield on a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we look to see if the state would install the evergreens first? It's their highway, it's their roadway, and let's see if we can get the state to do it. If they don't want to do it, then we'll have to do it.
Counsel Martin?
I think certainly I'd support both concepts. I'd just throw in that I know the DPD had studied the Tanner Street area, we had a grant to do that. I was a little disappointed, actually, with some of the recommendations that came out of that, but there may be a source of funding for that project as part of that Tanner Street initiative too that DPD undertook. Our hands are kind of tied as to what we can do over there until the Suresam site is cleaned up, but one of the things they were talking about was the connector.
So, actually, the manager would look into the feasibility of whatever way to go to put this and have this happen, whether it's the state, the grant of the city. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion's approved. Next motion, by Counsel Eileen Dunne, who City Council requests reported Community Preservation Act and the potential for Lowell.
Seconded-
Seconded by Counsel Caulfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is information that arises out of your cultural task force, and let me just say by way of explanation, the intent of this motion is just to try and get some information for the Council and for, to begin an edification process, actually. Just by way of information, the Community Preservation Act under Mass General Laws, Chapter 44B, allows mass choosied cities and towns to raise monies through a surcharge of up to 3% of the real estate tax levy and for specific purposes. What's attractive about the Community Preservation Act is if a city or town elects to do that, then the state will match the money, so it's one of the few matching grant programs out there. It certainly is an additional charge or tax or levy, and the maximum is up to 3%. Out of the 351 cities or towns, about 100 have enacted it so far. Many of the area towns around us have, Chelmsford has, Drakehead has, Tinsborough, Westford. And the intent of this motion isn't to buy into it wholeheartedly, but to get information. There are three things that can be done with the money. Let's assume that a community chooses to do this and raise money and then gets the matching money from the state. There are three purposes. One, for acquiring open space, and my first reaction was, what open space here in the city? But it can be used for other things, such as recreation facilities and so forth. So, open space has a broader definition than just what you traditionally think of it. Another is to help historic resources, historic buildings, and one of the suggestions is, you know, i.e. the Smith Baker Center, and using monies to preserve historic buildings. And then the third is affordable housing. Those are the three purposes under the Act that the monies can be used for, and the Act itself is complex and requires a lot of information. But the reason that it came up is because we're looking for new revenue streams for doing certain things in preserving culture, and that certainly could come through in a couple of areas, either open space and/or historic rehab type of monies, and again, taking advantage of the state grant. But, and in order to do this, it's, again, a complicated process. One, the City Council would vote on it, and then, two, it goes on the ballot the following year, so it has to be approved not just by the Council but by the voters. But before we even get to that level, it bears having the appropriate departments investigate and see, does it have a potential for Lowell? The first blush is it's added tax, and that would be a concern. A little numbers that were run showed that if Lowell's at 3%, it may be 48, on a single family, an additional $48 a year to raise a million dollars, but then the state matches a million. Mr. Manager, what the motion's asking for is, one, see what potential it has here. Two, nobody wants additional tax on properties, but is there a way of, because you get money for the money, that you can double your money or get double the bang for your buck and get some things done that we would also otherwise be doing with regular tax dollars? So, not an easy question, but if the appropriate departments, be it DPD or the various departments, I know the Law Department did an excellent overview and presentation for the task force, and if we could get that information, just, again, exploring another possible source of revenue where there's a matching state grant for monies raised on a local level. So, that's the intent of the motion.
Counsel, I know the Law Department has been working on this, and hopefully we'll have a report by the end of next week. It's a pretty extensive report, I think.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion's approved. The next motion, by Counsel Elliott. City Council thought to have the DPW remove the Spaghettiville signs. Seconded by Counsel Martin.
I know that I have filed it, and maybe Counsel, and I know Counsel Caulfield filed it as well when Prince left Lowell, and I think it was during the campaign, a question was raised relative to taking the signs down and why they haven't been, and the bridge that the signs hang on are owned by Transportation. I don't know why they haven't taken them down, I'm sure it must relate to cost, but is there some provision through you, Mr. Mayor, to the solicitor that, you know, we do have a sign ordinance, I don't know how extensive or, or we had a sign ordinance, I don't know if it's still in existence, but can we use some provision of that ordinance if it's still in place to have DPW take them down? I thought, I was really just following up on motions that have been placed, and I think that, you know, Prince leaving and Lowell losing all those jobs, and the people in that neighborhood were soured by it, and we should take them down. Mr. McCarthy, and I thought the Neighborhood Organization was in full support of this way back when, but now I'm told that maybe that might not be the case, but my understanding is that, you know, we want to take them down, they're not well-kept, and they should be removed, so that's the motion.
Counsel Caulfield?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I can remember bringing this motion in maybe four years ago, and I believe Carol McCarthy spoke against it. First of all, I have a problem with the way the motion is worded. We can't arbitrarily go up and take the sign. First of all, the sign is spray painted on the bridge. Guilford Industry owns the bridge. And I brought this motion in at least three to four times, and TJ McCarthy consistently called Guilford Industries to remove the sign. And if they won't remove a tank of acid off the railway, they certainly cared less about the sign. Now, I don't know legally, can we go up and spray paint over the sign? I don't know.
I think we declare graffiti and send a graffiti truck up there to take it out.
But I believe there's also a sign on the Lawrence Street Bridge, right, as you, by the low symmetry, I believe there might be a sign there as well.
That's graffiti too.
Right, so.
Let's get it out. Don't ask permission, ask forgiveness.
Could I ask TJ, TJ, when I filed that motion, what was your response from Guilford Industries?
I think we got one response out of three.
And it was just, they laughed at us, so.
Well, I think that's why my motion says, they want to laugh at us, then we'll take matters in our own hands.
I agree.
You know, there's not a one person probably from Guilford Transportation that lives in the city, so what are they going to sue us for? You know, for spray painting a sign that doesn't belong there?
The lawsuit comes in, it'll be against Eddie Walsh, Charlotte is to it. Mr. Martin, do you want to hold in?
Well, I just, I mean, I know, I do remember some people from the neighborhood speaking in opposition to this, that somehow these signs were some source of neighborhood pride or something, but, you know, I grew up in that neighborhood, lived there over 40 years, and, you know, all we ever got, we made fun of showing up in other parts of the city that you were from Spaghettiville, so I don't particularly remember it as a source of neighborhood pride, that Prince was laid off with the rest of the people.
So, it's graffiti.
So, I don't think there's anything wrong with taking them down, that's for sure.
It's graffiti at its worst. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion's approved. The next motion, by Counsel Elliott. City Council requests city auditor work the treasurer's office to address backlog of reconciliation of certain funds, and the city manager address staff shortage. Seconded by Counsel How.
Mr. Manager, the treasurer didn't come to me just to let you know, I don't want to be getting him in trouble, but there is an issue down there that I thought was important enough to bring forward. Several weeks ago, members of the Firefighters Union met with the auditor and the treasurer regarding checks that were missing, checks, not missing from their paycheck, but checks for money that has been taken out of their salary, and similar to 401K, it's an additional retirement plan. And this dates back 55 months, but it's not just a couple of months, and the issue and concern is lack of ability to reconcile the checks, outstanding checks, that the treasurer just, Mr. God, he doesn't have the bodies to do it, he lost a number of them to, one too early retirement, he's had some staff leave or transfer out, and not reconciling not only just the outstanding checks, but other revenue accounts, you know, certainly be cited as material weakness when, well, should it be cited as in the management letter from the independent audit, so I don't know how to do this, but we certainly don't want treasurer's office, so. I mean, in addition, now firefighters, and probably rightfully so, these checks are not deposited into their retirement accounts, they've lost interest for well over 25 months, and feel that there should be some compensation for the interest of these funds that have been performing, and that makes some sense. So, kind of twofold, came up with a solution to meet with, you know, these individuals, and I think the amount was over $14,000, but the checks didn't make it to, you know, to this institution. For some reason, the institution didn't call, you know, looking for money, that, you know, that's their issue, but I did speak to the auditor, and he is in the process of purchasing a module that'll be in addition to the system, that'll essentially prevent this from happening in the future. I don't want to elaborate on that because it's one way of addressing a $1,000 purchase that, you know, will affect the city in the future.
Well, what it is, is a file transfer program that you gotta use to the munis system. Munis system had that in fact in the newest upgrade in '05, but they do not have it in the upgrade that we have ourselves at the present time. And they told me that for us to get this process to nationwide, that's the name of the company, is that would cost us $500, I mean, $1,500. I told them to go ahead and do it because something that we have to get done is going. Back to us and told us that we wouldn't have it done until sometime in February or March. But once that's done, everything will be transmitted to all the other companies, file transfers, that's what we're doing right at the present time.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. And just out of the motion, backlog of reconciliation, I know the auditor is working with the treasurer and so, he started with 13 when he took over, he's indicated he's down to nine, and when people are down to four or five, he's actually working the window. I don't know if we can, from the office, I know that is short, but, you know, we got to make sure that, you know, our books will be in balance and, you know, everything is in our obligations, so.
The treasurer's office?
The treasurer's office, and again, he didn't stop complaining about this, and this came up, and he needs some help there to make sure-
Manager provided a report on policy relating to use of city vehicles. Seconded by Counsel Rita Mercia.
I know that we had discussed this in the past, we actually discussed it in Subcommittee, I don't know where it was, Mr. Manager, it's been weeks, where are we? Make sure that, you know, we have any liabilities with all the evidence and things in place. Can you give us an update where the policy is? And I know it's just going to be a trap, I think it's going to public safety or somewhere else, but-
I thought the process was done, so when I saw this person I talked about today, it was like, we've talked about it just about, so I thought it was already done.
Any questions?
It's actually pretty much between Dave Fenton and human relations.
Should or ought to be taken on that we had received the list at some point, that's a concern, you know, what are the purposes of people taking the vehicles home and/or the necessity?
It's mainly a list of regulations at the-
permitted uses?
permitted uses and require, you know, behavior, say, like belts and all this other stuff. But I think there's about 20 items on this list. At the end of the policy, however, there's actually where the manager retains the right with respect to the disbursement of city vehicles, and so that's in there, well.
Mr. Manager, do you sign off for, is there a feature that, I mean, I know that some people, some employees naturally take their, the DPW director would have vehicles in home, okay, you know, the employees allowed to take a vehicle home, and should there, I mean, shouldn't you allow somebody to take a vehicle home or have it sign off?
I don't remember ever signing anything saying that or the other, I think it's some years ago, we did do a kind of a inventory, and they said these were the people that were allowed to have them, and I think that's changed since- And I think that's changed since.
All right, thank you.
All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, we, we adjourn. It's been consensus to the majority of this council that the holiday season coming up has a, has a problem with having meetings right before Christmas and right before New Year's. So for a content purpose, the next meeting on the thirteenth will be the last meeting of the year. Something earth-shattering takes place where we have to call a special meeting. I also would like to announce that there's going to be a Christmas shoot on, and that city clerk Bill Busby on a motion by Councilor Howe is going to have a plaque, or the families going to have a plaque unveiled at the city clerk's office, I think on December twentieth at five thirty, five or five thirty, anybody will be in. You'll get a notice in the mail also. There might be a portrait unveiling signed between now and the end of the year, which will also be notified of. So, no, no, no opposition to canceling the twenty seventh? Hearing none, the cancel, the meeting on the twenty seventh will be canceled again with the understanding if anything earth-shattering happens, a special meeting will be called. Motion by Councilor Howe, seconded by Councilor Elliott. All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, we stand adjourned.